Construction project in town. I know that's not what the folks out in East, East Livermore want to hear, but I just, I'm not sure how well it, putting another bond out or call out would be received. I'm not saying the project's dead, but I think we need to put it to, put it to bed for a little bit and then bring it back.
I make a motion, we table the fire substation until the fall of twenty twenty-six. Yeah. And it's usually an election in November, so we can channel it for that.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Three in favor, opposed? Two opposed. The motion carries to move the discussion out one year to the fall of twenty twenty-six. Uh, you know, that's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure. We have it on the agenda listed a little lower, so.
Okay.
Nope.
You have one more, one more.
Yep. Alright. Up on, we have snow thrower sewer joint reserve request. Markin brought some information to us at the last meeting for a snow blower. Has Jay vote, has Jay made a vote on this, or?
Yes, Jay has voted on it. Um, they approved it in a certain order. We've had a two thousand and twenty-one Frontier at United Ag and Turf. That was a low bid at about thirty-seven hundred. The next lowest was a Norman. That's through Scott's Recreation at forty-seven hundred. And then the third lowest was, uh, twenty-twenty Frontier at United Ag and Turf of, uh, forty-eight hundred. So, the one that was cheapest, the two thousand twenty-one at United Ag and Turf, it is still new, just never sold. Um, comes with a warranty and whatnot. The question was if that price will still be available. We played us, that's why I did go into the three word J, just in case that isn't available. So, I had told you I could do something for six thousand or less. It looks like that can do something for forty-eight hundred or less. So if you approve that, and then I'll go through and see which ones are still available in that order. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
How much money is available in that joint account?
Joint Reserve account has a balance of about three hundred and three thousand dollars. And the available balance, less approved expenditures, is two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And as a side note, some of the expenditures that we approved, like for the catwalk extension in the primary clarifiers, you approved up to twenty-seven thousand dollars. We've gotten that bill, it came in at eighteen thousand dollars. We were able to reuse a lot of the catwalks and railing sections from the demolition of J plant and the demolition down here at Lubbock Falls plant. So it was repurposed and saved us about nine thousand dollars. I haven't got the bill yet for the roofline modifications to the primary clarifiers, but all indications are that ninety-seven hundred that was approved for that, that will be well in the budget as well. By approving it up to a amount, then letting us do the design, build, engineering, it's working quite well for us. It saved us money that way.
And once again, we were talking about the snow blower because the way things have been redesigned down there.
Yep. We've got a lot more roadway. We never used to have a road going back to the trickling filters and there's no place to really put the snow other than the border fence. So, that's gonna be the best way to take care of that, that way. We also have a few nooks and crannies that have been developed as the reworkers and yard areas and the new primary clarifiers are places we need access to. Snow will first be a long time for us, as opposed to plumbing. We still have the plow on the truck that will use that as well. Some areas will be about a snow load.
How, of course, there's always the question, how's the warranty and stuff on the, is that, works now?
It's warranted as new, yeah. I believe it's a one-year warranty. Maybe two, but I know it's at least one year. Product availability, I did check with both locations and they don't really have a lot of need for products. I know I was talking to Nate, he actually bought a snow blower off Scott's Recreation. He said, good luck with his, so. If we end up going to the number two unit, it's still in good shape. It's a little more money, but honestly, the thirty-seven hundred just seemed too good to be true. That's why I wanted to make sure we had a backup plan, just in case that's sold by the time we get to it.
Will this be the first winter that you, you have to do the muckadine and stuff the way it's set up if you didn't get the snow blower?
Yes.
Are you pretty sure that you wouldn't be able to push the snow into a different location?
Yes. I've been following for fifty years. There's no place to put it. I mean, we could pile it up and then we'd have that building down a little over a little bit, and I know when it comes time to move snow, we get too much snow. I think those plenty busy enough to go on the streets in town, usually. So, yeah.
What's the cost of the second lowest?
Forty-seven. And the third is forty-eight. So it's thirty-seven, forty-seven, forty-eight.
I make a motion, we go ahead and do the snow blower, add no more than forty-eight.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of spending a forty-eight hundred dollars on a snow blower?
Thank you.
School board appointment. So we had, had a talk earlier with our two school board candidates. And now we need to make a decision. Who did, so, uh, is that how we go to present it?
Just announce. Make this good, yeah.
Yes. Alright. The board has decided, uh, with a four in favor of, for Phoebe Pike. So Phoebe, congratulations. We are next, uh, fill in till April.
You still need to make a motion in a second.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Phoebe Pike as the interim school board member for the six month time left on the term.
Okay. All those in favor? One opposed? Congratulations. Alright. Next, we have the group seventeen project funding options.
I do want to point out a typo, if you will. We're copying and pasting in a different scenario, so, um, if you look at the second set of numbers under the SRF heading, um, that says three percent for thirty years, it's actually four percent for thirty years is what that thing calculates to, which is the estimated interest rate for the SRF loan. The DOT funding scenario is twenty years at three percent, not four percent. And that is the payment as it calculates for twenty years at three percent.
So that's supposed to be switched around? Are the numbers accurate? Do you know that number was switched around?
Yeah, I, I was just copying and pasting and I didn't change those two columns because I was too busy crunching all the other numbers late this afternoon.
She was testing me to see if I'd catch that.
So at our last meeting, we were talking about getting some numbers from Vortex, right?
Yep. We've done a lot more than get numbers from Vortex. We did get numbers from Vortex to reline the lines that could be. We got some numbers from the MDOT based on past projects that they've had for the dig and replace sections that we'll have. We got numbers from Vortex to rehab manholes instead of replacing them. And we got numbers from MDOT on what a typical manhole replacement would cost.
What does it mean to rehab a manhole? Can you explain the difference?
Yep. If you have a manhole that is, uh, in decent shape but leaking, has some bad mortar joints and that sort of thing, they go through the inside of it and basically put a liner inside it.
Okay.
That's something that Vortex does.
Is that like similar to the liner that you're be putting in the pipe?
Similar but different. Yeah, yeah. Um, the other thing we got numbers for was to replace all of the services. I believe there are eighty-six sewer services along that line of one point one miles of project.
Yeah.
Um, so those services would have to be tied into the new lines that are, the old mains that have new liner in them. So, as they're coming through the project and they hit a sewer service, they would stop, replace the service all the way from the main to the property line. So that everything under the pavement is either new or rehabbed. So that would add a cost, and we got those numbers from MDOT. We also got engineering numbers from Wright Pierce to change the plans so that they're ready to go up and bid with a new idea of relining the pipe. And we also got prices for, estimated for, uh, inspection services and construction administration during the rebuild, as well as as-built plans at the end of the project. That would all be under the engineering agreement contract. Overall, when you add it all up, instead of being at what we were anticipating, three point four million, we're at two point three five one million. That number includes contingencies, should be a safe number. Um, we shouldn't have to come back for more money once this goes out to bid, we hope. But you never know until it goes out to bid. Depends on the bidding climate, who bids it, and what their bids are. Fortunately, MDOT does have an uneven or unbalanced bid, uh, statement, so they can't put all the money in the pipe. They put one dollar in pavement. That has been done in the past and has been us. That can't be done now. It has to pass this straight face test, is actual cost being done.
Now, with the SRF, DOT is the one that's leaving us at three percent. Alright. Now, how does that work? Because SRF can offer up to a principal forgiveness.
So that's what the first, uh, set of numbers that Carrie has given you, the one point three five one. That includes principal forgiveness, and SRF will allow us to go for a thirty-year term at four percent interest rate. You can do a lesser term, but it increases the payment substantially. Typically, if you're building a sewer treatment plant, you take a twenty-year loan because the equipment is scheduled for the last twenty years. In this case, you can do a thirty-year loan because they're putting in a fifty-year pipe.
Now, could you explain this to me? Because I just don't understand where you get forgiveness from the principal. Where does that money come from?
So that is money that is given to the SRF program. Sometimes through the federal government, sometimes through state bond money and that sort of thing. So it is actually money that you take a loan on, and then when you close on the note, they give you a million dollars upfront to put on the principal. So through the course of the construction, we will have a two point three five one million dollar loan if this is approved. But at the end, when we go to close on the loan, they'll take a million dollars off that. There is no guarantee that we're going to get that. We've had discussions with the SRF program. There is a strong likelihood that we will get it. But in this political climate, you don't know what the funding is going to be. You don't know. We will know by probably May of next year, April, May, they will do the award, and we'll know if we're getting the principal forgiveness or not. Until then, it's, we've got a real good chance of getting it.
Now, would that mean when we discussed potentially borrowing from DOT and then applying for the SRF loan? Or how would that work?
So we got a letter from Ernie today. You get that as well, Carrie. And if we do the SIB loan, is what it's called, S I B, the first payment would come due in June of twenty-six. So, we have no money allocated for that at this point in time. And I assume if we go into the same, we want two point three five one million, we won't pay back to them what we've actually borrowed to that point. We will pay back to them a figure of payment on the two point three five one million holdup in twenty years. Or we would owe them, the first payment would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and sixty-six roughly.
Alright, thank you.
In June. The other thing that we could do is, uh, we could do an interim loan through Andres Scott Savings Bank. Then we'd only have to, we'd approve interest on the money that we borrow. In order to get approved for the SRF portion, we could switch it over to an SRF loan and pay off the ASB loan. And I say ASB because that's who we do our banking with. I mean, we could do an RFP for, inter, excuse me, interim finance through any financial institution. Just giving an example of what we've done in the past.
As I say, the other thing with the DOT funding is that they want quarterly payments as well.
After the twenty-sixth of June, or?
Beginning June twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be twenty-five percent of the hundred and sixty-six thousand, which is still a lot more than what we probably would have borrowed to that point. Or spent, I should say, to that point. Wouldn't you think it'd be better to do it in compliance somewhere else if we planned for the SRF? Just because of the quarterly payments? And we don't have that money allocated in our budget this year to make that debt service payment.
Well, so if you went with the SRF loan, how long would it be before we have to make the payment?
At the end of the project. Once you close on the loan, that's when you will be interested, you're approved to date at the closing, and then you would have a payment due, depends on when we actually closed on it. But we would know when that payment would be coming up. So we could budget for that in our regular fiscal year budget. The debt service line.
I think the DOT loan is not practical, given our situation, even if we wanted to consider that. As far as trying to pay it back.
It doesn't fit with our timing or the affordability because it's over twenty years, not thirty.
Right.
What's that?
Oh, you said you'd be earning some interest while we make the payment.
Yes. Yeah, because we're borrowing money, it's, the interest will be approved, and we owe that. Yep. I think the closing is how it's been on the treatment plan.
What do you agree?
No, we're estimating four percent.
And then we have the scenarios for next to the current, whether I would break down as.
So if you look at the top line under, um, just any one of those, so the, again, if the, the sewer users wanted to pay back, I just took the pay, average payment and divided it by six hundred and seventy-one, that's the number of users we have in the sewer system. The cells next to that are if it's going to come a hundred percent from taxation, and those are the values on a hundred, a hundred fifty, and two hundred thousand dollar homes. Below that is the twenty-five seventy-five split, twenty-five percent sewer user, seventy-five percent taxation, fifty fifty, and then a seventy-five twenty-five, or a seventy-five sewer, twenty-five general taxation. And that's in all three scenarios.
I appreciate that. I was hoping we'd see some numbers like that. Thank you.
So that has nothing to do with, 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 with.
Right. Right. Well, and then Mark, on the, the next sheet, Mark actually did some, some quick calculations based on those sewer users information that we have. This is based on current year.
It's based on current year budget and current year water usage. So basically, if you wanted the sewer users themselves to pay for this, we had talked about at the meeting we had at the high school of increasing the minimum sewer use fee to four hundred dollars, which would be a fifty-five dollar increase. And then adjusting the sewer rate accordingly, the cubic foot, cubic foot usage rate. You would have to go up below one and a half cents to cover the eighty-two thousand dollar payment. I think the most reasonable scenario is hoping we get the one million dollar principal forgiveness and pay back the one point three five one. And also know that when the, this goes out to bid, if we end up with a project that comes in at one point seven five, we won't have to pay back the full amount. We'll just borrow what we need to do the project. But we may not get the full one million dollar principal forgiveness. Usually, the principal forgiveness is not greater than what you're gonna pay back. So if we borrow two million, we're likely to get one million. If we borrow two point three five one, we're still likely to get one million. But if we borrow one point seven five, we probably won't get the full million.
Kind of difficult.
You know, they want some payback on the money that they're putting out.
Now ultimately, at the end of the day, we still have to put it out to the, to come in and make a decision, make a vote.
Yep.
I have been thinking about this personally, and I would like to figure out a way to give them that opportunity. If they want to vote for it, then let them come and speak. That's kind of what's been going through my mind. As we look at some more affordable numbers, it's not quite as damaging. Now, where I'm hung up on is how to make for it.
Yep. There's, there's no doubt the camera work, the CCTV work that we've been doing, we're almost finished, probably will finish up on Thursday. It's showing that since two thousand eighteen, when it was done last, these sewer lines appear in much worse condition now. There are some sections, manhole to manhole, that there are like eight pieces of the pipe missing. We've had the, the jet trucks up there pulling all the debris out of the lines. As far as will they make it through the construction, they won't. They're not making it just through general life cycle, so. You know, the pipe is a fifty-year pipe, and some of it's seventy-five to a hundred years old possibly. We've got to use out of it, it's just time to do it. The problem is, the timing sucks. To be quite frank with you. But if we don't do this, and we tell the DOT that we're not gonna do this project, we're gonna end up having broken pipes we're gonna have to fix anyway. We're gonna start spending a lot of money in this road. And the citizens of the town will not have a new road to Idaho. It'll be the pothole-filled, washers, sinkholes, I think along this line now. How many sinkholes have we got, Bill? Six or eight?
Yeah, I would say at least.
Currently. And that's not gonna get better. That's gonna get worse.
Carrie, on the numbers here, now, we're talking just hypothetically on the split scenarios. With, with the sewer rates, would that be on top of what their taxation would be for their properties?
Yes.
Yes.
So they would receive that plus whatever the, whatever this is per hundred thousand on top of there, correct?
Correct.
So, as an example, if you looked at the fifty-fifty split, if you did that, that would mean that the sewer users would have to raise forty-one thousand dollars roughly, as opposed to for eighty-two thousand. So then you would only have to go up three quarters of a cent, and probably to three hundred and seventy-five dollars for minimum use. And then the other fifty percent would come out of general taxation. That's just an example. It's not, I'm not saying I recommend that. I'm just saying that's how the numbers would play out. You would reduce the increase to the sewer rate that I've proposed here. Or not proposed, but illustrated. I'm not proposing anything. I'm just giving examples.
Right, and then they would, they would still incur the, the cost per hundred thousand on top of?
Yes, that's still paid on their taxes as well.
Right.
Guessing that probably half the population of Lubbock Falls is on town sewer. That's a guess.
Right, so it's fifty-fifty, but it's still not technically fifty-fifty.
Right.
You have anything just saying on that number?
Yeah.
Go over to seventy-five twenty-five. I don't want to, at price.
I know. So instead of the sewer rate going up to what we have, it'd probably go up twenty-five percent of it. So you may go up to, say, three hundred and sixty dollars for minimum use. And then you'd probably go up half a cent to twenty cents. Something like that for usage over that. As you go up on the amount the taxation's gonna pay, the sewer amount goes down.
So what are we looking to decide tonight?
I think if you want to bring it to the legislative body for a vote, you want to do it.
It, it would have to be, you think. So it'd still get on in the November ballot? So we'd have to have a special election.
Can we do a town meeting with a show of hands?
It would have to be. I believe it would have to be.
It would have to be. And that's the easiest, that's the quickest way to do it.
Well, to meet DOT's timeline, it would have to be.
Right, and then how do we make sure we get a, a fair amount of people to show up for such a big decision? That's tough.
It is.
Just looking at the payments, are there possible payments? Now, you've got three percent for twenty years, and then you've got four percent for thirty years. The, under the thirty years at four percent, the payment a hundred and forty-two, seven fifty-six, if we don't get the forgiveness. And eighty-two plus change if we do get the forgiveness.
Yes.
In my mind, why are we even considering the DOT at a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Because it was an option that was presented to us, so we wanted to carry those numbers forward.
Okay, it's a heavy option, Michael.
At the time, we weren't sure if SRF was going to be an option.
Right. We didn't understand it was quarterly payment.
Correct. Found that out today.
Right.
Basically, the rates will come down if we get that million dollars given, so.
Well, the rates won't come down. We're still after, we're still gonna have to go up on the rates because.
Yeah, we, that's drastic.
I'm not gonna guarantee the million, but I've got a good feeling about it.
If it does.
Yep.
In the, um, the reserve, the reserve fund, which is funded by Septage, uh, tipping fees.
Yep.
What can that money be used for?
That money that's going in there is in the Lubbock Falls Reserve account portion, not the joint reserve account.
Right.
But the Lubbock Falls portion, the balance in there now is around forty-five thousand dollars. And it can be used, and that's what we intend on using it for. Not so much to make payments, but to do capital projects. We have never had in Lubbock Falls Reserve account for these sewer lines in the street or pump stations. That's what this is gonna be used for, you approved an expenditure of up to seventeen thousand dollars from that fund to pay for a pump, for all of those pump station. That's what that is gonna be used for.
What, what do, do you have an average, what gets brought in at Sepage fees now, because we couldn't receive for a little while, correct?
Yep, yes, and we're going to have to shut down Septage receiving again when we put in under the watering press. But we are scheduled to do that through the winter months, when the Septage haulers are bringing less volume in. We want to make sure we're open and ready to receive in April through October, November. That those are the busy months. Typically, through the course of a year, we bring in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars now. That's last year's figures. Of that, eighty thousand dollars goes into the joint reserve account. Of the remaining eighty thousand dollars, that gets split between the towns of Lubbock Falls and J based on the full split percentage. This year, J is fifty-three percent, Lubbock Falls is forty-seven percent.
On, on this project, Mark, what percentage of the, the infrastructure is gonna be replaced as far as the piping that's, that's on our, on the one point one mile?
Yep. It's about one point one miles, and it's a hundred percent. Will be either reconditioned by relining, reconditioned by re, relining the manholes, or replaced by replacing the manholes, replacing the sewer services, and replacing a certain section. and replacing certain sections of the sewer line that are in conflict with where the new storm drain for the state is gonna go.
So what I'm, what I'm asking is, townwide, a system townwide, what percentage does this represent of that infrastructure?
Cost wise or distance wise? Because it makes a difference. In our back streets, it's not as expensive to replace town sewer. So even though this is, this section may be only eighteen, fifteen to eighteen percent of the total sewer lines in Livermore Falls, roughly, it's probably because of the cost being under the state roadway, um, and the depth going down through Main Street, it may be like twenty-five percent of the value.
Real quick, what's the, what's the rest of the infrastructure look like? How, is that all to...
If you were an attorney, you wouldn't ask a question you didn't want the answer to.
Well, I get all, I get all...
It's not good, Will. It's not good. This, this, what we're seeing is typical of seventy-five percent of the rest of the system. It's all in bad shape. Billy and I were looking, or hoping to do Union Street, School Street, uh, out of Latham Terrace, that's in bad shape. We're hoping to get to that, but there are so many fires burning, we don't have enough water to put all the fires out of. This one has come to fruition because the state is looking to spend fifteen million dollars in our town, and we think it's foolish to have them go away.
If we may, we talked about doing this tonight, setting, setting up a town meeting, would we need to include the pay, the pay scenario along with the lower amount that we would have on the warrant for the town meeting?
I could make the call to SRF and get maybe, if they know that we have to go to town meetings and borrow an amount. I know they're gonna tell us we have to borrow the two point three five warrant, but we may have verbiage in there. We may have some assurances on the one, which I do not have.
Well, what I'm more concerned about is...
I'm just trying to think of the financial statement and how, how it has to be worded, because it's very specific and it's, um... Yeah, I, I don't know, I'd have to get a, I'd have to get an opinion on that. It would have to be broken down into two separate articles, one for the general application bond, which would be the total amount of the two point three five one million, and then a separate article for the repayment methodology. Yeah, so I don't, I don't dare say.
Well, given that we don't, we probably should check, I think, legality of that, so we're all secure.
I think timing wise, you have to, correct me if I'm wrong, decide to have a special town meeting tonight, and then the legalities will fall. Because time is of the essence, MDOT would really like to know which way the towns meet. They realize we have to go to a vote of legislative body. And if we show that we're doing it as quickly as we can, I think that will work, but they're looking to put this up to bid in January. In order to do that, our engineer has to have quite a bit of time to get this all on paper and ready for the bid process, so they can award it in February, sack construction in April.
So how soon could we have a town meeting?
Um, so you need to approve the warrant, you have to have a public hearing at least seven days prior to the town meeting. You don't have to worry about absentee ballots in the thirty days there, so you have one in November. You know, or in November, or the beginning of December.
When, when's the election?
November fourth.
So that's Tuesday, so we'll only have a meeting on the first.
Right, you have a meeting on the fifth.
Is there any way we could have that town meeting on the fifth?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Just ask.
So we have to schedule a public meeting, public hearing, and then at that, of course, after public hearing, will we expect to have the legal confirmation by the...
Oh, yeah, I should be able to have this. It'll be the twenty-first.
Well, we have to have the decision, obviously, I think it will be how we're going to pay it, as whether it's gonna be a hundred percent on sewer users.
Right.
It's gonna be listed, how it's gonna be broken down.
At the public hearing.
Uh, so it's all valid, yes.
So does that mean we need to file one, or will we have time to do another meeting, another public hearing? If we have to have that information, should we have that all on the warrant and stuff?
Right, you have to approve the warrant.
Right. Or it will set to the public hearing.
Right. So what you, I mean, if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to make a decision tonight on which repayment methodology you wanted to use and which, um, which scenario, I would say, I can just give the opinion based on that and... Is it, 'cause you have to approve the warrant regardless, whether it's one article or two, so.
So just know that when it goes forward, if it passes, MDOT will be doing the project, I don't know, but... And if it does not pass town meeting, MDOT is gonna take their money and go elsewhere.
They can turn right now, just dig and knock it up. Everyone just dig and just say, exactly, you guys, we're gonna do it anyways, there's no chance of that.
And if they do, then we have to raise money to fix what they break, which is two point three five million.
It's a possibility.
We either do it, or we don't.
Which is, that's what I'm getting.
Yep. I think Ernie and Dale have kind of come to the conclusion of putting up out of this, they don't do it. And I understand where they're coming from. You know, they can't call me and say, come fix the sewer line, they say, you're on your own, I've got my money. That's not gonna fly. He, he won't let them put it on that path.
If we did the warrant, the last meeting in October, we have the town meeting in, like, November tenth on the Monday. Because we kinda, I mean, we can't sit on it, because DOT's waiting for an answer. I mean, it ain't like we got all day.
I don't know if you want me there for that, but I will not be here on the town.
You might get more done.
You might, you might go better without me here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's the day before Veterans Day, and I'm not sure if people will be taking a long, a long weekend or not.
No. Oops, sorry.
I mean, we can't sit on it.
Under the sewer rate information, so I'm trying, would we need to include how we're going to, if we're gonna go with an increase to the minimum usage with the rate, along with how we decide if we wanna split it?
So you'll actually, I believe, decide that next year when we set sewer rates? You'll decide, because we'll, when we do budgets, we'll know that this is gonna be a debt service payment, and we'll set the sewer rate to cover the debt service payment.
We'd decide this, right? We would decide this.
Yes. You probably won't have to do that at that point in time, because these payments won't come due until sometime on twenty-seven after that fiscal year.
Well, and the reason why I ask is because people are gonna make a decision on voting for this, on how that's gonna get broken down, I would think.
Yes.
That, that's what I've been, I'm trying to get at, because if they think that, you know, it's all gonna fall on the high users, one person might vote one way, and, you know, so just reading off these numbers we have here with the, the scenarios, it might not affect how that's gonna work out for people.
Doris just suggested, uh, why don't we do Saturday the fifteenth in the morning? I know it's hunting season.
Is this, is this a town meeting or a warrant?
The town meeting. Well, I think, I, I was just thinking the possibility of having more people.
I won't be there.
Yeah.
You're definitely gonna get into the hunting crowd if you do it in the morning, you'd probably on a Saturday.
I know, I was gonna say, yeah, but sometimes we have to do what we have to do. Do you wanna do Tuesday, November eighteenth? It's a Tuesday, everybody's used to Tuesday meetings, all the...
All the board meetings.
Before Thanksgiving.
Double O B.
Yeah. It's got other board meetings.
I'm not just answering the board, we just have a...
We need the board meeting, we have something, we have business, we have to get there. We can do it after. Do it after.
What's wrong with the thirteenth or fourteenth? Thursday or Friday?
Either one.
Fridays are tougher people, like, I can guarantee that.
Well, Thursday's a lucky thirteenth. I mean, the longer we sit on it, the longer the town, I mean, the DOT doesn't have an answer. And we gotta do something.
So Will, just a statement that you made about the high-end users gonna fund more of this. I just did a check on the twenty-one, if we go to twenty-one cents per cubic foot, that column. The sixty-five hundred category users, their increase would be thirteen percent. The next fifty-five thousand cubic foot would be eight percent increase. The ninety thousand cubic foot would be an eight percent increase. And the hundred ninety-five thousand would be a seven point nine percent increase. So percentage wise, it's fairly close.
Now, that's based off of a hundred percent sewer users, those numbers.
That's based on a hundred percent sewer users, yes.
That's if we go to the two point three five.
One point three five.
Right, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's assuming we get the one million dollar principal forgiveness. Just when you said that, I just wanted to check the percentages. I didn't realize it'd be as close as that.
Okay, could we agree on a date, please?
Because all this information is gonna have to be ironed out before we present it to the public. Discussing it tonight is basically moot point.
Let's just pick the date.
Well, we have to, we have to have a decision to draw to the warrant for the next meeting, so we can have it presented, and then decide on a vote on it, a public hearing, so we have to make a decision tonight, so the warrant can be drawn up.
Do we have an eight?
Eighteenth, town meeting.
Thirteenth or fourteenth, it's quicker.
I'm fine with the, with Thursday. I don't, we were talking this month, right, obviously. I don't think I have any...
November thirteenth.
November, all right, much better, yes, actually.
November Thursday, November fifteenth. Thursday, November thirteenth. Is everybody okay with that? Good, let's write it down.
And then that'll give us enough time to set a public hearing, which will give us enough time to set.
Do we have a motion?
What time?
Six.
I make a motion that we set a, a meeting for November thirteenth at six P M. to approve the warrant.
No.
No.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, I'm sorry.
Open town meeting.
Oh, that's the open town, the open town meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Get that one out of there.
Yeah, what do you wanna put before the voters?
Are, are we going under the SRF with principal forgiveness?
I would recommend yes.
Then I would like to, and I'm just throwing it out there, be thirty years at four percent, eighty-two thousand, thirty-four, forty-six, all the way across, fifty fifty. Just as a starting point. Can you hear the merits for and against?
So that can be changed at the public hearing?
No. Can it? I don't believe so. It's gonna be on the warrant.
The only thing you can change is the dollar. Up or down, but it, but you can't. No, actually, you can't, because it's, it's part of the, the financial statement, so, yeah, it's not like a, it's not like a budget article where you can lower it and... Sorry, I'm thinking of...
Oh, we have two other options?
Mm-hmm. How, who, who have you, I don't have, don't tell me who, but what are you hearing from your constituents?
People are not gonna be happy, no matter what we do. And the thing is, if we're gonna have it go up for a ballot vote on the thirteenth of November, we may have to go back to the drawing board, but at least we're going ahead.
The thing is, at that point, there won't be any time to go back to a drawing board. It's one and done, I believe, with MDOT.
Most people I talk to agree it needs to be done, but they do not. People that are non-sewer users do not feel they should have to pay for it, and that's just what I'm hearing. That's, that's what I'm hearing, so...
I've heard people that are non-users believe they shouldn't pay for this, and then I've probably heard twenty percent of, of the, of the people I've heard from think that it should be, like, they should pay for, uh, sewer users should pay for more than a non-sewer user. I'm in the boat. I can go either it should be a hundred percent to the sewer, or it should be seventy percent to the user, and twenty-five percent to the non-user. But as Ernie says, it's a hard topic, so, I don't know, we're rolling the dice here, and the dice has a lot of sides on it, more than the normal dice.
Well, my first choice was the seventy-five twenty-five, but I decided to start in the middle, just to see which way we go.
And then how do you, how do you have a town vote, uh, when, if it's all put on the sewer users, while people aren't sewer users make the decision?
Unfortunately, the general taxation, town vote, they get to vote on sewer issues even though they don't pay.
Either way, because if it's something out at least a little more, it had to do with just the, the non-users, you know what I'm saying?
The whole town votes on it.
Right, either way.
And ultimately, the town is on the hook for this payment.
Right.
So if the sewer treatment plant or sewer department vote, the town would still hold this debt, and have to come up with it somehow, it's a town debt or a sewer department debt. It's just that the town has chosen that the sewer users pay for it, if that may be the case.
Well, the sewer users are gonna pay for it one way or the other. And if we split it seventy-five twenty-five, twenty-five seventy-five, fifty fifty, those sewer users are still taxpayers. So their pockets are gonna get hit twice.
Well, that's, and it's always trying to work out being close to actually one sixty-four, they're not fifty-fifty.
So the chances are, if you went with seventy-five, twenty-five, the sewer users are gonna pay probably eighty-seven, eighty-eight percent.
Right.
In the long run, because they're paying with an increase in sewer fee and an increase to their taxes. So seventy-five, twenty-five split doesn't necessarily mean that's a split. You follow what I'm saying? But to get that and explain it so that it makes sense before the vote, good luck.
And that falls on us to put something out that might pass. That's...
Is there anything hiding fast that we have to go with twenty-five, seventy-five, fifty-fifty, or, like, I mean, sixty, forty?
These are just examples, if you're ready to give you a little flavor, that's all.
Right, sixty, forty would probably end up being closer to seventy-five, twenty-five in actual numbers.
That's what I was thinking. The thing is, we gotta move, we gotta move in some direction.
But on the face, it's gonna look like sixty, forty is not seventy-five, twenty-five, well. Then when we try and explain that, it kinda falls under the liar's figure, and figures lie, as far as credibility going forward.
Well, we were told that roughly half the town are sewer users.
Roughly, that's an estimate, Eric.
Yeah, well, we're playing estimates here. If it's twenty-five, seventy-five, and the sewer users have to pay half of twenty-five, that means the non-sewer users are paying twelve and a half, and that's where you're getting the eighty-seven point five. Sewer users.
Yes. But then you go with town valuation, where is the value? Is it in-town or out-of-town, is it on-town sewer or off-town sewer? You know, that brings in, like, the biomass plan. Off-town sewer, but a lot more, worth a lot more than thirty houses in-town. On-town sewer. You know, it's hard, I'm just trying to give an example of it's hard to really split that and come up with a good percentage.
You've got two hands, you're juggling three balls, and somebody added the fifth.
Yes.
Good luck.
And skip the fourth.
No, you got a vote.
So looking at a sixty percent payment on the one point three five one million, it's thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents on a hundred thousand dollar one.
I think we should go sixty, forty.
Is that a motion?
Well, if it would move us forward, I'll make a motion that we choose the sixty, forty.
I second it.
Under the S R F. with principal forgiveness plan.
Sixty sewer, forty general taxation.
Whatever the numbers of these are for. Yes.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion beyond that? Do we have all those in favor? Two, three in favor, all those opposed? Alright, so we have three in favor of borrowing one, one million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for thirty years at four percent, which will work out to be eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty-six cents average payment per year, at a sixty, forty split between sewer users and general taxation.
And the bottom line of all this, of course, is that it still goes to the voters.
Yes. It's just we know how to prepare the numbers now.
Right.
We can have that information in the public hearing.
So we're gonna have this ready for the next select vote meeting, and then we'll schedule a public hearing, is that what we're looking for, a timeframe? Alright. Run the agenda again.
Fire apparatus.
Yes, old business, we have the fire apparatus. So you gentlemen have brought us back some more information. I got two trucks, uh, one of them is the twenty-twenty-five deep south international pumper, and the other one is a two thousand and seven, that's a Pierce pumper. And that's what the bulk of these pictures are, the two thousand and seven, correct? What was the, I didn't have a chance to review the warranty, what's the engine warranty on the two thousand and seven?
The warranty on the two thousand and seven?
Yeah.
It's a one-year motor and training.
And that's everything with the motor and training going there? What is the, just out of curiosity, what was the, what are we looking at for a warranty on the deep south pumper?
The deep south was, I know it was... I did send that paper to the warranty team. It's a deep south five truck warranty.
It's probably double-sided papers, I guess, lost.
Yeah.
It's a one-year material and workmanship, uh, structural, lifetime integrity on the apparatus body, ten-year material and workmanship on the stainless steel piping, ten-year, uh, on the paint and corrosion on the body, one year on the graphics and painting, and seven years on the electrical.
Under...
On lifetime, uh, on the polytank material.
We have some information here. Is this the number that's written in, in addition to, for the heater and the chains?
Yes.
Okay. So fifteen, eighteen thousand for, what is that, injection system? Okay.
And then to install the pump panel heater, that's between sixteen thousand. Install automatically chain for the tires, that's six thousand. Uh, install rear heat, well, heated mirrors for the, that's forty-five hundred. And then five thousand dollars to change the tires to, for winter.
Brings the total purchase price up to five hundred, ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
What, what was that number, five-ten?
Two fifty.
Then we're looking at ten to fifteen years of warranty on that, is what it sounds like, on most stuff.
Now, okay, that, five hundred, ten thousand, two hundred and fifty was the bottom, everything included, on that deep south. What's the numbers on the Pierce?
The Pierce have, it's a, so the whole thing is, uh, two hundred and forty-five thousand, and it has everything already. And then it changes, it has the heat pump, it has the foam system, and it has a calf system for the foam, so it's, makes the foam much better to work on.
Now, does that have the pump on the center?
Yes, it has the top pump.
It was, was it three thousand to bring it up here? Was that what I mentioned?
Thirty-five hundred, so if you, the total will be like forty-eight, five.
Forty-eight, five to bring it up?
Yeah.
So that's what, forty-nine?
And just, just so that you know, the, between both pumppers, you gotta look at our engine, one, you gotta look the, the hoses that we carry in the... So the, the deep south's only carries four hoses. The engine that we have now has seven hoses that we need, and a half percent in the structure file, we use all seven of them sometimes.
As far as hoses go, what he's talking about is pre-connects, so the hoses are already connected to the truck. So when we get on scene, literally, all we do is pull the hose off the truck, and open up the valve, and there's already water flowing out that hose.
It's already hooked at the other end inside the truck.
It's already hooked to the pump, essentially. So that, that's what he's talking about, when the, when the hoses. So this, our engines we have now have six or seven on them, and that, most structure fires, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of those hoses are off. They're dragged around the house, or wherever, inside the house, wherever we are with them.
This one seats how many? It has a much larger, it seats what?
It sits, uh, six, and five C V A.
Pierce has the six hoses?
Yeah.
And it seats six, we were discussing, you, uh, you brought up that it has an internal radio system for communication, is that what we talked about? Within the two thousand and seven?
Yeah, it has the, the headphones that we, we could talk and stuff like that in.
I could see where that would be very beneficial for, for Aaron, you know, getting readiness when you're on call.
And I'm pretty sure that, that Pierce that you guys are looking at now has a headphone jack at the pump panel. So when you're pumping the truck, you can put the headphone on and still communicate with the other people. I don't know how familiar any of you guys are with standing up at a pump panel, but it is loud up there, with the, with the engine running, the engine's revving up, the hoses are running, the fire's burning behind you, it's, it's loud up there. Anybody who has any experience in the fire service knows that. So lots of times Caleb's pumping the truck, and somebody has to run over to Caleb to holler at him, to tell him to boost pressure, shut the line down for whatever reason, lower the pressure down, stop the line, so we can add another line onto it if you need more length. And with this, we'll be able to communicate with him from inside the building, to tell him to shut the line down, boost the pressure, add foam to the line, or whatever, whatever needs to be done.
You said with this?
With the, with the headsets.
Now, is, is this Pierce or both?
With the Pierce. The Pierce comes with the headsets.
The other one does it?
No.
Um, also, you, would you touch on, you said there's a lot of customization as far as tool storage.
Yeah, on the compartments, in some of the pictures, they have, uh, extra compartments that is for the medical issue, uh, medical gear that we put when we get our license back, that we could put on that truck, and have it ready for that, any calls that we have to go to, medical calls. It has, uh, side mount and inside, so you could get them from either way, outside or inside of the cab.
And also, the, the compartments themselves on the body of the truck has been updated. So like one of the compartments on the back side of the truck has a door that you open up from the outside, and there's holes there, and then there's another door that opens up, like another closet, for more tool storage behind it. The compartments are a lot bigger than what we have currently right now.
The black and white pictures are hard to tell, but you showed me pictures.
Yes.
Underneath in color, and from what I saw, it was a gorgeous looking, it looked like it hadn't been seen in.
No, it has not been used. I got a little bit of the bottom.
So for those of you guys that don't know, Nixon actually drove his family to Pennsylvania last weekend with this truck. On his, on his dime.
This is the bottom of the truck, the front, the nestery of the truck.
Now, this is a demo truck, as you were describing.
It was a demo pumper, the, the company that had it was in the West Side Fire Department that bought three trucks. Uh, one of them was a ladder truck, and the other two were pumppers. So they used the ladder truck, there was a pumper, and the engine left that one at the station, they only tested it, drove it to pass inspection every year. And that's why the low modus has it, the engine hours, it's only one thousand, six hundred, and engine on the pump is only fifteen.
For, for reference, how many hours are on the engine and pump one right now?
Pump one?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand and fifty-two thousand miles on it.
Fifty-two thousand miles in seven thousand hours.
My count may not be that good, but I see eight, nine, guys that I know are firemen, there may be more. Are you guys all in unison on one of these trucks?
Yes.
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 May I ask, which one?
Pierce.
Pierce.
Yeah. And that's at almost half the price?
Right.
Two forty-eight, five-ten. And the warrant said we could spend up to what?
Five hundred and fifty.
Five fifty.
Let's go with the Pierce.
They're the ones doing the job, and it saves the town a bunch of money.
And it's beautiful condition.
My question would be, where's two hundred and forty, two forty-nine, fifty? Is that something that we want to borrow all the money for, or do we wanna borrow partially and pay some of it down, so we're not taking it all out in a loan? That's a question.
The original intention was to get a less than ten-year-old, used, good apparatus with borrowing up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and taking a hundred thousand dollars from the reserve account. So they could have up to six fifty to spend on an apparatus to replace engine one, which is a nineteen ninety-three.
Now, I know the, the, within the ten-year idea, that wasn't, was that in the warrant? They didn't just say, didn't say an actual year, so...
That was discussion that we had.
That was just discussion.
Discussion.
Because we got sick of being over and over and preparing and repairing and repairing, and we want something newer.
Like, like, this truck has not seen any fires. I know it's an old truck, but we're a small town, and these used trucks don't be available to anybody else that can afford the trucks. Because I present you guys with the new truck, but yes, it's eight thou, eight hundred thousand. It's gonna keep on going up, and prices for these trucks are way too much.
I think, I think the truck is, it looks immaculate, almost, you know why, it might have been a good thing that the vote didn't pass the last time, because I think this is a better, better truck. A better truck for the money, and it sounds like it's something that the firefighters who, who are gonna use it have good faith in it.
I make a motion, we go forward with the Pierce at no more than two hundred and forty-eight, five.
Forty-nine.
It's two forty-eight.
Two forty-eight, five.
Two forty-eight, five. I have the forty-five hundred. I don't know where I get the forty-five hundred from, sorry.
It was thirty-five hundred to bring it up.
And that put it to two forty-eight, five.
I second the motion.
Under, if, under discussion, are we talking about borrowing the money or using reserve funds toward the...
We would have to borrow some of that.
Right, we'd have to borrow some of that.
In a reserve fund, we were gonna put a hundred thousand towards a newer truck. If we put a hundred thousand towards this one, we only have to borrow one forty-eight, five.
That still leaves a hundred thousand in their reserve.
Which we could work on the capital improvements project for, down the road, for another vehicle.
Right.
Because we have to get in the law, less than what was voted in the law.
I would make the motion to amend, uh, amend it to using a hundred and forty-five thousand, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, five borrowing, and a hundred thousand from reserve account.
I'm seconding.
All those in favor? We sent something to approve the original motion, since we approved the motion, the amendment, you can get complicated with all that stuff. Alright, so...
You didn't ask if anyone was opposed.
Oh, sorry, is anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? None opposed?
Anybody abstain?
Anybody abstain? One abstaining. Alright. So we're gonna move forward with that, though.
You get it, you got the contract, right?
Yep.
Alright. Thank you, gentlemen.
One of you does it.
You can sign it.
You're all right.
Sign it. Sign it. Forget me folks while I find the agenda.
Is that a low money?
Yeah. On the new business, we have acceptance of donation for recreation field playground equipment.
So we had a donation of three hundred dollars by Ron Chadwick to make repairs to the little wooden playground equipment down in the rec field. I need permission to accept that.
I make a motion, we accept Ron Chadwick's donation of three hundred dollars.
Discussion? All those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed, none abstaining?
Let the minutes reflect that the board gratefully accepts the donation from Ron Chadwick.
Yes. Up next, we have board and committee application for...
I make a motion that we accept the board, the application board and committee form.
I'll second it. Can I have one moment under discussion? I'd like to... Now, where is this gonna be turned into?
The office.
Gonna just be turned into the office? Will this be printable from the website eventually? Is that what we're talking about going? I was just looking for instruction on where to turn it in. It's on the back. There you go. Please understand this one is the town office in my files. Do we, with it being potential, how do we, how can we verify that they actually turned it in? And they, is there a way to add something to this, that they can have a copy of it? That it's been received? That way there's no, the person can't claim they turned it in when they didn't?
A copy can be easily made.
Right. Well, yeah, I know, but a copy, but how do we prove that they didn't just make the copy, I suppose, and that it was actually received by the town office?
We can date, we can date it, and... Yes, but we ask like a receipt.
We have a receipt stamp, we could put on that.
Yep.
Doesn't the receipt stamp have the place where you can write the date, and then a signature or initial?
I would like to add something in there. This is the applicant who received a stamped copy of their application.
So amended.
I second the amendment.
All those in favor? Five in favor and none opposed. Up next, we have DEET LLC Medical Marijuana Retail Store, we store renewal.
I move that we approve the application renewal from DEET LLC, doing business as Sugar Kush USA. Everybody, everyone has signed off on it. There have been no complaints or concerns.
I'll second it. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Next, we have DEET LLC Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility Renewal.
I move that we accept the application for the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility Renewal by DEET LLC, doing business as Sugar Kush USA. Also, no, no problems, no complaints, and everyone has signed off on it.
Seconded.
All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have warrants abatements, deeds and quitclaim. We have, there's no amount next to payroll warrant, is that...
Yeah, I just didn't have it.
So we don't...
Next time.
Alright, no payroll warrant. I move to approve general fund warrant number twelve in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And number thirteen, the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Seconded.
All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed. Next, we have sewer pavements, eighteen Millet Street, in the amount of three hundred and forty-five dollars.
This is for the property we added to the Legion Drinker Sewer Bill, so they asked for a big, and they are going to eventually, hopefully this fall and winter, tear that down and cap that sewer.
I would make a motion to abate this sewer for eighteen Millet Street in the amount of three hundred and forty-five dollars.
I second.
All those in favor? Who in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Want to abstain?
Oh, I should have two abstained.
Can we switch that to three in favor and two abstaining, please? Alright, board discussion.
As we have still more business later in executive session, I'm not gonna say a word. Surprise!
I'll follow this one.
Likewise, we're all good under board discussion. Manager discussion?
That's good.
Manager discussion is good. Department heads, doors?
Absentee ballots are available. Feel free to ask for one, request one. Also, Chunk of Tree, October thirty-first, five to seven out here.
What was going on with the scarecrow business? I didn't see anything.
There was a scarecrow contest, and people could fill out an application and put their scarecrows up, and they got judged.
Did that already happen, or?
The...
Quite a few of them up there.
There is.
It was yesterday morning, wasn't it?
They judged Friday night.
Did I miss it on the, the town page? I must, I didn't see any information.
I believe it was there.
I don't spend too much time.
Yeah, it goes all the way up to Jay Town Office, I believe.
Lost my own little world.
I think I also sent it out of board meeting, and I had applications.
Yes, you did, and I thought I went and looked on the Facebook page, and I must have not scrolled far enough or something. Alright, do you have anything else for us?
No.
No. Nate, do you have anything for us?
No.
How's everything at the fire department?
Good.
Good? Okay. Billy or Daisy Billy somewhere?
Yeah, he left.
He left already? Alright. Alright, I don't see any other department heads. Hmm, the clipboard? Yeah, no, it's alright. Do we have any other comments, Nate? Yes, Carol?
Just a comment from me. You have voted to table the substation, which was loaded on long before any of the sewer or DOT or anything went on for a year, which I don't think is really fair for those people out in East Littmore. As well as, people out in East Littmore are gonna tell you, if you're gonna raise our taxes, they're gonna vote no on what you're doing with the sewer. We don't use the sewer. I mean, we have to pay for the, well, we, fire, we have to pay a lot for the fire anyway, okay. But it's not fair that you're asking us to pay for things that we don't use. That's my only comment.
Do you have any other comments? Okay, seeing any, so we're going to move into executive session. I move that we take a ten-minute recess, and then move into executive session, one of ours, section four oh five, I'll re-advise.
I second.
All those in favor?